And I'm gonna call our work session to order regarding public rights of way to the border and related parking issues. And this came about because of complaints you've received about access to rights of way and point you with neighborhood, Conan and Pilgrim avenues and Caleb Avenue. So we decided, we put this on as a work session to kind of go through the issues that look specifically at that area. I know the police chief and the acting, police chief, acting town manager have looked through that. So this is a work session, so some of you may have been to some of our other meetings, we typically hold these work sessions in one of the conference rooms and they're more informal and we kind of work through the details of the issue and try to come up with something that we can put on a town council agenda to vote on. But no decisions are made at work sessions, so although we moved here simply because we felt the audience size was gonna be larger, so we sometimes move work sessions into this room for that reason. But, um, so we're gonna go through that, so I think first, in terms of the background, that's why we are where we are, so I know that, I'm gonna turn it over to our acting town manager Sean Borgan to let us know what they looked at and what their views of that area and proposals that they may have come up with.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, everybody who came out tonight. So in preparation for this work session, I took some materials that I obtained from council person Murray and some other information from meetings I had with Councilman Pugh and sent them to my areas of police traffic safety work group. I got the town engineering department involved in this and the public works department involved as well. And my direction now is to take a look at the area of Caleb, Conan, Louise, Pilgrim, and come back to me with a suggestion of some location where we could put parking spots that would be safe. Mike, can you put that map up for me? This is the overview, first map. See Pilgrim right here, here's the waterway. Here's a Conan on the other end, little water right away right here. So when engineering went down and took some measurements of these roads down here, here's what they found in Caleb Avenue, which runs north and south, it's a two-way road, the average width in that road is sixteen, sixteen feet. For Conan right here, the average width is nineteen feet. Here's Louise, and the average width there eighteen feet, or pardon me, Pilgrim, where the average width is seventeen feet. So the traffic work, safety work group thought that on street parking, it's just too narrow here, we do, we look for roads for two-way traffic to be about twenty feet wide to have parking in this group. Mike, can you go to the other, the other map for me? So what they came up with is, looking at those, at the water right of ways where you have a dead end there, so there's no traffic coming through, we could fit free traffic, three parking spots here, Conan, and three parking spots here in Pilgrim, and this location right here, near the intersection of Caleb and Louise, because this is town-owned right away, that's our property, we could, we could gravel this out, put a chain around it, and get another four parking spaces there. So that's what their, their recommendation going back on, strictly from a safety standpoint, they didn't do any public outreach, get any community feedback, just looking at it from can we do it perspective. They also took a look at what we had at the police department for complaints, just to see what the, the activity that down there for, for both enforcement and complaints. And this is primarily the enforcement is being, is coming from complaints that we get in the community. The complaints that I had, there was only one instance where an officer initiated enforcement, and it wasn't a surfer or anything of that nature, it was a contractor that lives down there, it was a block of the road. So I'll give you a brief overview of those stats. For Caleb Avenue, so far in 2019, we've had six traffic complaints, that was the most, the most complaints from any of the roads. 2018, there was only one. For Conan, we have had four this year, only one last year. And then last year for Louise, uh, this year, I mean, for Louise, we had zero, only one last year, Pilgrim, one this year, one last year. So most of the complaints come in for people parking, parking the road in this, breaking this area. Council President, so yeah.
Thank you. So the parking restrictions that we have in many of these neighborhoods are usually for concerns about disturbances in that area. They, we've had them and we've seen them in other parts of town, and many people who live in the town are familiar with those issues that we've had over the years and related to essentially a lot of the college rental issues. But these parking restrictions were, have been in since 1976, just so people have that as a, as a benchmark. So, um, so based on that, I think if there are any questions for, for Chief Borgan?
Why am I showing you?
No, no, let, then we'll do the council's work session contract and then we'll, yeah, okay, yeah. So, um, so the way a work session works is we go through this and then come to the public, sometimes, and sometimes we don't. The goal is, because it's a pretty targeted issue, we'll be able to probably get to the public. Alright, so, what, do any council members have questions for that?
Chief, I appreciate the work you guys have done so far to get this together. Just a few questions about street widths in general. What is considered to be a proper width for a street to allow parking on one side in town?
For a street that will have parking, a lot of parking on both sides of the road, we're usually looking for it to be at least twenty-four feet wide.
So what about parking on one side?
We allow it a little bit narrower, sometimes has to do with the way the layout is here. What we found in this area is that, for example, Caleb, which is the most populous spot for people to park, it's only sixteen feet.
Wait, 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 guys. Okay. So if, if, do you, I mean, there's, obviously, this isn't like, I'm not looking for a guarantee or anything to be official, but if you had a street that was twenty feet wide, would that be possibly appropriate to have parking on one side?
I get complaints from people who have roads that are twenty-two feet wide, usually we try to set to the twenty-four feet wide. If it gets less than that, we try to limit to, to one side of the road. But with narrow roads like this, and the main concern is when you have a large vehicle like a fire truck that's gonna come through, that's where we have concern.
Yeah, okay. So when I look at the overlay here, I'm assuming those black lines are the official lot lines? Right? So like, the width of the street is on paper, like really twice as wide as what is the pavement, that's all.
Correct.
Right? So the town owns everything between those lines where the street, you know, the overlay above the, the, uh, okay. I'm not talking about just the right of ways, but the streets as well, right of way and the streets, the town owns that land, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So they could, you guys, the town could pave over a foot on each side, two feet on each side to make the street wider? Because it's not really the proprietor's land.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't vet any proposal of that nature.
Okay.
We took a look at people parallel parking on the road.
Yeah.
And going in the grass.
Yeah, yeah.
With the acceptable location where we, where we have town-owned property, we can put an entire vehicle in.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm just really trying to kind of outline all of the potential options.
Yep.
I know you guys kind of thought of it one way, but there are other options as well. You know, if there's opposition to this, there's other alternatives that could be done as well. So just wanted to see what the average would be for a road with parking, and to see if, what I'm looking at, are the actual lot lines, it sounds like they are. In terms of the parking at the end of the, or at the opening of the right of ways, the access points?
Right.
The other, there's other right of ways in town that have town-developed parking there at the, at the entrance point, right?
Yes, Bass Rock, New Haven.
And how many spots, do you remember the amount for each of those?
Bass Rock, they have nine parking spaces there. Newton, it's not lined, but it's similar size, and there's a bit more land, probably fit more along the lines of eleven or twelve cars in hazard.
Okay. And, um, so it would be not out of the ordinary to add parking to these, because we do that, you know, it's already done around town?
Yeah, the situation, issue that we ran into with the dead ends here is that previously the town has given permission to the landlords to put landscaping and whatnot in that town, town-owned area. Give me an example. So, I believe this gentleman here was given permission, and there's been a, a current forum about this, Mike, but I believe the plan board had given permission here, but the work hasn't been done yet. So we didn't look to going into, onto the property because there's been a, like, it's even.
Okay, but it is still owned by the town, that land?
Uh, yes.
Okay, got it.
Great, I think that, I, I may have a few more questions in a few minutes, but I appreciate that, thanks.
Yeah, Sean, again, thanks for the staff, jumping right to it, this is what, thirty days now, you guys, these guys snap right to it, believe me, bureaucracy in this town is a snail's play, so they did a bang-up job here for you folks. What's the widest road, Pilgrim, Pilgrim be the widest road?
Conan is the widest.
Really? Can we go back to the other area? Okay, um, I'm gonna see it. Alright, you see where Louise is, right, the one in the middle, the road in the middle?
Yeah.
Alright, if you go, one, two, three, three properties to the, that'd be west, there's another paper road over there, is there any way we can slip in two more spaces right there? Got that paper road, it's not named.
It's, I think it's central.
Central.
Yeah.
Right, right here. Uh, to the, yeah, to the, to your right, and all the way towards, does that mean right there? Does that mean right there? The, the road is parallel, Caleb, thank you. Caleb and Central.
Yeah, we'll have the engineers and the public works take a look at that.
Right, because you got, yeah, you got, looks like, looks like you got the opportunity to add, you know, two each on either side, that'd be an affordable. Again, just wanna thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, any questions, gentlemen, ready? Alright, so do people have a, do people have any thoughts, do you have more questions?
I just have one question, I was thinking, I'm sorry. I know there's, you know, obviously neighborhoods in town where they have water access points and they're really more like associated with the neighborhood, and sometimes they're actually tied to like homeowners, and people paying to get access to that, or dock their boats or have a slip, that sort of thing. These right of ways are, were created by the state, correct?
What, are you reading the history of them?
Uh, these are, granted, uh, road accidents from subdivision that were reported years ago, not by the state, but, they're, they're a CRMC, by the way.
Yeah, the only thing I saw on CRMC is that it docked a spot for Louise, it's a Pilgrim.
Twenty, no, I have a, twenty-four.
But, okay, so are they officially state public right of ways?
Yes.
Which, because they are.
And we're getting different points of view, and we, and, she can play more directly more from the listener.
Uh, Mr. Pugh, uh, what you're hearing from the audience has to do with whether they're designated CRMC points of access, that's one, that's one thing, and I believe the folks in the audience are correct, but they are town-owned rights of way.
They're town-owned, okay.
Yes, they were created during subdivision seventy, seventy-five years ago, so they're town-owned roads, as they get down below the mean high water line, it's owned by the state, but they're designated as access points by CRMC.
Okay, yeah, I'm not talking about the road itself, but just the access point.
Once you get below mean high water, it's the property of the state, up above that is the property of the town.
Okay. Would, would you consider this to be in any way similar to like those private neighborhood, you know, right of ways or access points, or are these different? Like the smaller, Mike, yeah, that's great.
Uh, the private ones you're talking about are usually private rights of way owned by either a homeowner's association or something of that nature. In this case, the right of way is owned by the public.
By the public, right?
Yes.
So it's a private neighborhood access point, it's public. Okay, thanks.
Alright, so in terms of, members of the council, before we then can go to the public, because it looks like we have nothing else there, no more questions, any reactions to that, or any idea of how you would wanna go about, they said recommendations for ten spots, and there are two kind of distinct, there's two, six spots that are on the, those paved roads, and then we, which would be part of really the access points, the rights of way, and then we have another suggestion, which is, we'd have to, we'd have to essentially create four additional parking spots, which would be on town-owned property.
I plan to put on the next regular meeting, just get these ten spots squared away and give them cracking iron for the summer.
Well, if we came to a consensus here, you wouldn't have to put it on, you'd probably have the town manager.
Alright, alright.
But if you wanted to do something different from that, that's fine.
Right, so I think best to get, get the ball rolling, we get these ten spots squared away, and then maybe do some exploring, additional exploring.
Any one else?
What's that? Yeah, I mean, uh, yeah, I'm for it, and you?
Yeah, I, I think the proposal makes a lot of sense, definitely wanna hear from the audience, I don't know what's opinion on it, but at this point, I think that, I think it's a job well done, and seems like it'll solve, or you know, help to alleviate the issue for the season.
Any thoughts?
So, Sean, they've investigated this, their recommendations are, you know, that's what we pay them for, to put them on there, look at this stuff, come up with a recommendation, and we're talking ten spots, I think it's a foot in the door. And again, this should be, this is a foot in the door, it's a recommendation, we move forward with it, it's also gonna be based on, you know, the future of what goes on down there. If we get a lot of complaints, and I'm not pinpointing to any individuals in this room or anybody else, just saying if a lot of complaints in the future come in, this may be in five or six years, a different council looks at things in a different manner, and things can change. So I would say, let's go to this, I think there are some other avenues that we're gonna hear tonight, that are great avenues, and I think that's a good start, from there we can always work forward to make it better. So, I'm definitely on board with this as it sits.
You go to one.
I'd like to hear from, there was some frustrations out there that I think would like to speak and consider this, I, I think the two paved rights of way I'm in agreement with, I don't necessarily think that the town should take a large body of grass area and plow it down with gravel and, and harden off, but the other six certainly makes sense, but let's hear what the audience has to say.
Alright, so we're gonna come to the public, so if people can be succinct in their comments, that would be very helpful, so when you come up, just state your name and address for us. Alright, I'll start with you.
Dr. Carolla.
Can you come to the mic and use it?
Dr. Carolla.
You gotta press the button, kinda.
Oh, fuck.
Hey, when it's red, it's, then everyone can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Perfect.
Dr. Carolla, grew up in town, uh, I'm just gonna, you guys live in a station, so, part of the reason why you're seeing so many people come here is the dominant, dominant wind of the summer is southwest winds, okay? That's why it serves up in there against the beach, and it's become over the years harder for non-residents, or people within the area, or people traveling that come to there against the beach, right? They all came to there against the beach because of the offshore winds, it's also a beginner area. This spot is also a beginner area that also has southwest winds, so when you do one thing at the beach, the population moves, they come here, um, so that's why you're gonna see an increased population, they're gonna drive by the beach, they can't park, they're gonna come here. But I'll show you something, so I'll speak loud. You were talking about, I like the place more than anything, granted, you were talking about parking here, alright? Now, on hurricane season, because it's usually really busy in September, most of towns, I come from February, I park here by myself, because it's cold, alright? Nobody usually parks along here, alright? The parking spots are here, what used to be right here, I built a, a wall, right here, guys building a wall here now, alright? Some of us park here, but six or opposite sides, alright? And then this property, it used to be empty, or was for sale forever, and everybody parked there, alright? And so that's where guys park, and here, alright? Then over here, I think it's Nicholas Avenue, that runs down along the water, alright? That's where everybody else parks along that, which is not even on this map. Right there, there's no houses on the north side that, I don't know why that, where it is, but those are your actual parking spots, very rarely surface park in Caleb Avenue, that's why your complaints didn't show that. We had one.
That's where I can show the parking.
Right, and that was a guy doing construction.
No, there's, um, six parking plans coming from Caleb Avenue, that's the reason we get enforcement. Nicholas Avenue you're talking about is the most narrow road in Platte, it's, it looks like a lonely road, so.
Correct, but it ends up being, they don't park on the road, they end up parking like in a swamp, I'm just telling you where they park.
Right.
So just so the town council knows about, it actually goes down, that's where they usually park, here, this used to be the main spot, we lost when that guy built a structure, alright? It used to be here, this used to be like ten or twelve spots, along here, couple here, couple here, and then along that way. So that's, that's all, I just wanna educate everybody on that, maybe just wanna. So, I, I agree, I, I like the town, yes, I think we should have more, but you know, this is a natural resource, alright? People move here from New York, and they, they're gonna come here no matter what, but if we don't build the infrastructure or designate it properly, we're gonna have, we're gonna be out here every three years, and let's just, just start, so, thank you.
Thank you, yes.
My name is Gina Salagio, um, I have always come to there against, I'm a random resident as a child, and I've been here pretty much my whole life. Um, my parents bought a house on Louise Avenue, we've been residents down here since nineteen ninety-four. Unfortunately, my mother only got to enjoy her house for four years, but in those four years, if she sat on her porch, on her little alcove that we had on our house, she could look right down that little grassy plain, right where you want stick, or the council is thinking about proposing to stick four gravelled parking spaces. So while I sit on my alcove to think about my mother, God rest her soul, who's been deceased for twenty-two years, I now own this house with my sister, I'm gonna have to look at it, four gravelled parking spaces, right down from where I live. I have a point of where I live. This is my driveway, this is my little alcove that I sit on my rocking chair and think about my deceased mother, and I look at this little section of water. I'm viewed as a peaceful neighborhood. I am not here tonight to deter surfers. I love the ocean, just like they love the ocean, we all love the ocean in this area. It is an extremely special neighborhood, and many, many people across the state and outside the state are probably in need, so I hear people when they drive down the road, and they drive down the road and they look at properties and they say, wow, you are lucky to live in this peaceful neighborhood. So yes, we have coexisted with surfers over the years. Again, I'm not here to deter surfers from surfing. I have lived in my neighborhood with the no parking signs, in fact, I didn't know there were no parking signs until some were put up in front of my area, some new ones, but I was surprised to hear that, because, you know, I've seen a few around, I was surprised to hear that they've been up since nineteen seventy-six. Because we really have an issue with parking, although with the hurricanes and the crazy weather and everyone comes down to see the wild waves and ride the wild rain waves, we, we, okay, we've coexisted with the surfers. I have never called the police, in fact, I've been on walks, and when there are many, many surfers crowding the streets, and when there has been police cruisers around, I've actually said, hey, be careful, there are no parking signs, you might get taken, I've actually tried to help the surfers. And I have watched surfers right in front of my house, there are vacant lots there, and they have driven their cars online on the property across the street, made big dudels of, of tire mops, and I've watched them address in front of my house, pretty much half-naked, most of them, we're okay with that, many neighbors have young children, there are some young children in the neighborhood, I'm sure they're not swaying. And there are also, there are some remnants, when they need, there's sometimes our bottles or some trash left behind, and I go and I pick it up, but I never complain. So we've coexisted pretty good, I suppose. And now we're here to discuss adding parking spaces to a simple piece of grassy land that we never complained about people walking on that area, there are no chains on it, there are no ropes, okay? Anyone can walk there if they choose to. I am here tonight to just simply coexist with whoever wants to come down and walk on public waterway, but to, number one, don't park on, if there's no parking sign, there's no parking sign, the town put those up. So maybe there should be a complaint about the parking signs, I'm not really here to talk about that because I follow the law. I didn't even park my own car across the street where there's a no parking sign. And when I have guests, I cram them into my driveway and I tell them, there's a no parking sign, and so I'm trying to follow the law, I'm a taxpayer, I pay my taxes dutifully, I have every right to oppose those parking spaces, and for my other neighbors that may or may not speak tonight, I walked down those dead ends, okay, there's no parking signs, and again, the surfers park, can they do as they please, no one complains. I would like to know, and maybe it's not public opinion, I'd like to know where those six complaints came from, because the neighbors that I speak to, none has called the police. So I'd like to know where those complaints came from, and looking at the numbers, zero, zero even on my street, zero complaints. So I am here, admittedly opposed of those, at least those four parking spaces on that pristine grassy land, is it anything sacred anymore? Every single patch of leaves, okay, is being built upon, or taken over, is that sacred?
Alright, whoa, whoa, so I'm, I'm gonna, I did ask people to be succinct, so I, I think we.
So again, I promote the four parking spaces, just so it's on the record.
Thank you.
And I will come back and speak on it again, finally, too.
So it'll be, well, if we have it on a town council meeting, we'll try to see what the consensus at council is, so thank you. As I said, try to be succinct, and in terms of the signage, nineteen, I said the nineteen seventy-six year, that was when the restriction began, obviously signage over the years has not been, it was not here since nineteen seventy-six. So, contract, please, the yelling out, we got, okay? Alright, let's not yell out, alright? Go ahead and start.
I have a rock down in South East Town, I've been around for twenty-five years, I am the owner of just Surf Shop in Wakefield, I also see some other business owners here, Tom Hogue from Warm Winds, I saw Wally from Wakefield come in, actually from Westwick come in, I don't think anyone looked at the financial impact that this might have in this community in regards to taxation dollars that come in. Surfers from, as Connor has stated many times, surfers come from all over to our little hub here to enjoy the. Surfers come from all over to our little hub here to enjoy the shoreline, coastline that we have here. And I don't know if anyone's looked at that financial impact. If people are getting tickets, they're not gonna wanna come here. I mean, it could be a price to pay, but I can say that, you know, I'm not in Narragansett, so it actually won't affect the universe taxation dollars, but I know Tom over in Wormwood, Narragansett Surf and Skate, so this might be something that you guys might wanna look at as well. Again, not a Narragansett business, but just wanted to ask, thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Good evening, my name's Christine Morgan. I live in Narragansett, I grew up in Rhode Island. And my house is the house adjacent to where you're closing. We place four spots, this is my house. So, we've lived there and there's never been an issue with surfers coming down that right way. My kids that I have, we sit and watch the surfers. We welcome people to walk down there, it's a public access. People in the neighborhood, that's the only access, that's their only green space where they can go and sit in their complete lawn chairs. We, you know, watch fireworks in there in the neighborhood every year on the Fourth of July. Proposing four gravelled spots with a chain around them, right under my daughter's window, where people may be parking at 5:00 AM to get the best break. I mean, talk about a noise population at 5:00 AM. We have desk full allowances that can't happen before 8:00 AM. People slamming chalkboards. It's our only green space in the whole neighborhood that we can come together and... So, I have a letter here that one of our neighbors wrote. She could not be here today, but she lives at fifteen Caleb, you'll see it in Zebrao. And she mentioned some very valid points. A public access is an easement, a privilege to pass over the land of another, not an absolute right to do what you want. CRMC has published a guide to public access points in Rhode Island that specifically puts the public eye notice that there is no public parking on Caleb Ave, Conant Ave. And that is why the nearby area was known as Memorial Park as ample parking. Ample. Therefore, the public is eye noticed and assumes the risk of parking in an area so designated and only hosted by the town. I do want to mention that I have never complained, I have never called the police. I have never heard of one of my neighbors calling out a surfer. They're part of our community. But parking in our only green space becomes a very concerning issue for its very small neighborhood. You talk about taxation, we have been prehensive and we contribute greatly to the taxes of this town. But, I mean, you know, the wealth there and the safety concerns, I maintain that land. I don't receive any money from the town to mow that every week. Who's gonna maintain that now? Is it gonna be a chain link around there, is the town gonna come and monitor that? Are they gonna pick up rubbish? Are they gonna make sure that there isn't overnight parking? How do they even guarantee that gives surfers are gonna be using that? There could be renters and tenants that are using that. Parking is only one use of the public access. So, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Miles Mike, living in South East now, but I grew up in Narragansett and surfing down here since probably about 1986. My dad used to surf down here and he taught me to just be respectful towards the neighbors. You know, when you're changing, make sure you're covered up, don't leave any garbage. And that's what I think you would all like to continue, to just kind of coexist with everybody. And looking at that green space, I personally don't want it there, want parking there for that right. Like, being on like, from a selfish point of view, that's a nice spot, we can cruise by and see a bunch of waves while you're maybe heading up to the other house. But Steve Bravo has opened, very organized, and let people park on his road, on Louise. And then on the north side of Pilgrim is where everybody parked. South side of Conant Ave, and then the dens. Is there something we can do to limit those no parking signs from the corner of Pilgrim to fifty yards up on Pilgrim? And then from the corner of Conant to, you know, twenty yards? And I know for a fact that people that own that piece of property on Conant, the corner of Caleb and Conant, they welcome us to park in the driveway. I think that personally, if we can come up with it with, you know, work with the town, like, if anywhere, like, so gravelled, so people's lawns aren't getting ruined, so areas on a, uh, empty lots aren't getting ruined, put the gravel there, people can park parallel. It doesn't take away the view of the people that live here around. And then I think we all get what we want. You know, it does seem kind of silly to frustrate everybody in the neighborhood to just four places. I would rather be able to justify, I mean, wait, are you guys have some parking on Louise? Or on Conant, or on Pilgrim? You know, personally, I think it's a shame that the town gave up some spaces for, I don't know, some not so nice landscaping along Caleb and Pilgrim. But I think that would be a good compromise. I think everybody in the neighborhood, the residents of the neighborhood would get what they want. Surfers would get what we want. And we can all enjoy the resource in the ways we live here.
Like I said, I want to give this to my people to look at, to get suggestions on safe locations. You know, there's always two questions I have to answer, you know, can we and should we? Can we, I bring to mind people, to show me some safe locations, you determine whether we should or not. So, any other suggestion that come forward, we can find a better for you. If there's any homeowners that don't like having gravel on new property, we can take a look at that. That's all, this was just a suggestion from staff on safe locations for public traffic in the neighborhood. As far as changing parking signs or, you know, can't ignore ordinances when we get complaints. So, there's a restriction in place, if somebody calls the police, it brings it to our attention. When we come on scene, if they don't move their car, then they get a ticket. We don't say we're in force here or not in force there. Not enough logging changes, there's no fair way there. Yeah, the parking restrictions, yeah, they are in place right now, so as, and as we discussed, they've been there for some time. And remember tonight, when, if we come up with something to propose for a council, for a council agenda, it is gonna be something, not, it's gonna be something that we're gonna be revisiting probably and listening to feedback and seeing how it's going for whichever way it goes. I think that's important. When you make a change, you usually hear, usually hear from people in the neighborhood or whoever are affected by it. So, that's important for everyone to remember, this will likely be looked at and will be looking at, looking at it whichever way we go tonight. And it is nice that there's a lot of relationships where people are getting, you know, personal permission from people who are their friends in the neighborhood and that happens throughout the state and throughout Narragansett. And so, we've heard some of that tonight and I suspect that that was probably going on in this neighborhood as well. But anyway, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Madalise Rechtstek. And I, thank you, Miles, for talking. I tend to agree about that space as well. And my question is, is with the two little sections on Pilgrim and Conant, you know, those are fairly large public owned sections. And I do have questions as to why the town would grant permission to the homeowners to be putting landscaping up on that public land? And therefore eliminating what could potentially be more parking space in an area that already seems to scream out parking? You know, you look at Bass Rock and the other road up off of Ocean Road. I think they've done a beautiful job of creating a very nice parking area and maintaining some privacy for the surrounding owners. And if the town was to not allow these homeowners to be encroaching on that town's space and actually redesign that space with horizontal parking or two-way parallel parking, you can actually accommodate a lot more parking spaces within those already given areas. I guess I question, why should those landlords have the right to create landscaping on property that doesn't belong to them? I agree, I think that we have somewhat coexisted in this area and I have been super appreciative of many of the homeowners in there who have allowed us to park. And I repeatedly say to my fellow surfers, and we discuss this, there is a level of respect that needs to happen if we are going to access these breaks and be able to park there. And we are trying to spread that word, you know, don't park on people's lawns. You know, get in your car and drive somewhere that's private and get undressed. If I lived there and I had small kids or didn't have small kids, I'm not sure I would wanna see somebody half naked out in front of my house every time there was a swell. So it goes both ways and we do want to work on a positive solution and a compromise. And I think that we're getting there and we appreciate, you know, the town council working on this and hopefully we can continue to come up with some more solutions. I don't think six parking spots is gonna eliminate the problem that exists there correctly, but it is a start. Thank you.
My name is Roger Robbins, and I'm the president and live on forty-five Caleb Avenue. And that's the second home, to be right, I moved out from Louise Avenue. And I didn't give up my age, but my birth mother worked the place back in forty-four, forty-five. And I come and here since the eighties. And I work in that third for a year to give a life, and moved back eight, seven, with my parents, my grandparents. And I think that's a little bit before surfers started to come here. And there was a time, the road was very easy access and the drive in the past one or another. And usually I've been discovering in recent years that the best road is Louise Avenue to get off Caleb because the other ones sometimes, depending on how they choose the path, and until they put up, uh, no path on the outside of Pilgrim, it was a green truck. And my concern sometimes, nobody really talked about, some one person mentioned about, um, like fire apparatus. This past Thursday of last week, it was a fire truck, but it was a landscaper further down towards Pilgrim. It was Todd on the road and Todd off the road. And it was a dumpster truck that came along and tried to get to a new house being built down at Pilgrim. He couldn't get by that trail. And he had to back all the way up to Louise Avenue to take a right about Ocean Road and on Pilgrim, all of the kind of dumpster. And it's usually landscaping people sometimes that, excuse my word, ignorant people when they park and sometimes they block driveways. And usually the surfers have been good when they park in those side streets. One time I did mention to a couple surfers, they were going to park on Louise and Caleb, and you can't park there, and there was a parking sign. And then they used the excuse of, "Oh, they're kind of going to park in here on the corner." And sometimes those excuses are people use to run with their up here. And the parking at the end of Louise Avenue, if somebody suggested, have you ever considered or thought about, it's not just for you surfers that are gonna park there. There's rentals in that, in that area, and you're gonna have many and everybody park there and they're gonna spread the law and people go away. And you start seeing somebody who's something, the copycat, seems to wanna take over a little bit. And just makes it hard for people to get by. And there have been times in the past that I've called the police. But it chooses renters that just really don't seem to care about what the people have to make all the good time. And that's all the surfers. I can't complain about the surfers for most times, they have been very good about them. Except, I think somebody mentioned some kind of way to dress up, dress up and stuff like that. I have those for time and sometimes I don't know why they wanna go from one street to another. And they travel, they pretty can't go to speed. Sometimes I used to say to my wife, "You're a little bit of a sailboat rower." But I know we can't do that, but I would do it anyway. But a couple of just other things that have seemed to come, but I don't care. Sometimes certain things hit on people who just wanna be, give you a selfish point of view. Rather than trying to give, we'll say, "Oh, it's a kind of a whole picture." And somebody mentioned all businesses and money, all of the taxpayers in the neighborhood. And I was like, "Okay, it's good price for living in that area of swell." May also have rights above surfers, right? Thanks so much for listening.
Thank you.
Chief files, keep by by Ministry of Energy's Rhode Island. Well, not fifty-nine. And even though I'm a transplant from Newport, I've lived here for the last thirty years. Even as a young boy, I was brought over here by some of the older kids and always surf point to the, in these avenues all the time. And have never gotten a ticket. So that's over forty-five years of surfing without ever getting a ticket. And so, as I sit here tonight, especially after I heard the nice residents get up and speak, you know, I'm left to wonder, how did we get to this point that we're here right now? Because it seems to be, to quote Shakespeare, "That this is much ado about nothing." They wanna coexist with us, we wanna coexist with them. Should just take down the, take down the no parking signs, right? Find us thirty-five bucks apart on the road when nobody seems to be really having a problem with it. Now, I think as surfers, and I think everyone in the room will agree, we kind of self-regulated the parking down there. On Conant Ave, for example, nobody parks on other than the south side of Conant Ave. No one ever parks on the north, ever. They park on the south side. On Louise, they park on the south side, never on the north side. On Pilgrim, everyone parks on the north side and never on the south side. And there's never been a problem. So, I don't understand, you know, we're turning this into a public safety issue when it really isn't. And if it is, as I think someone else pointed out, just look at this map. Those black marks are the property lines of the property owners. Everything else is owned by the town. So why, right, and I'm not picking on Louise Avenue because, but it just happens to be one, look to the south of that. That's at least as wide as the road to the south. Gravel, all the way down that road to park. And the other thing is, I think that everyone needs to be mindful, this is not a daily occurrence. I mean, I'm sure you've been the people in the neighborhood, all attest, when there's swells, there's people there. Unfortunately, we live on the east coast, there are not swells all the time. And so we're not using those access points. So, I think that we really need to step back and say, "Why all of a sudden they taking?" Even though there's been no parking, no parking signs there. I have never gotten a ticket, ever, in my life. And I hope it's not because I have a Narragansett beach sticker on my car. But I've never gotten a, I've never gotten a ticket. So I think we really need to step back and look at that. Now, on another note, in anticipation of this tonight, I did reach out to the owner of the Bonview because he has got a tremendous amount of parking in there. And I'm not suggesting this as a answer to the solution, but maybe a supplement to it. Mr. Aiello did authorize me to speak tonight to basically say that if, you know, parking is eliminated or there's not enough parking, he would consider allowing some parking in the back of his lot. And people can actually cross right through there to the least of the breaks, I think, at Conant pretty easily. I don't know about Pilgrim. But he needs to look at this, and there are certain conditions, he's gonna talk to his insurance company. There's a lot of issues related to that. But it's a supplemental solution to a complex problem. So I think that, really, the town council needs to just step back from it and go, "Wait a minute. What, what is going on here? Is there really a problem because five or six people complain?" That's gonna happen irrespective. So I think we really need to just sort of step back and let's assess this thing and, you know, we're just trying to enjoy ourselves. I think all the neighbors have tested, we're respectful to them. We don't need to get a thirty-five dollar ticket to go enjoy something that everyone is passionate about. $35 ticket to go enjoy something that everyone is passionate about.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Carol O'Leary and I live on Louise. From what I hear from you, you have zero complaints on Louise Avenue. I also mow the grass all the way down the side of the street, which allows the surface to cut more of the street. There has been absolutely no issue with cars being moved in and out. I think that the whole neighborhood, they exist since 91, the Munchen's and the next door thing, they use that right way, children use that right way, their grandchildren use that right way. My son uses the right way. We might go down there instead and not want to grab any things. And I think the county do something at least as far as our street is concerned. We have totally respectful of the surfers, they're very polite, they walk out through the right way, they always acknowledge whoever's there. And I would like you to work for both of us without becoming four rabid park places. The other neighbor adjacent to that who's not here, basically, pretty much living in her pushing the engine on both sides. I think you ought to consider the neighborhood, the people, and how we coexist with no problem and maybe even do something about creating more than four on Louise. Because there is room on the side, there are no houses on that side of the street. I'd like you to consider that.
I'd like to clarify one thing. Thank you. My recommended assistant across the president tells me where the complaints come from. It doesn't tell me where they go to take it. I would have to go to the municipal board and actually pull it up, so I can't, I can't tell you specifically what road we see does parking to get on. But I can tell you that the only time the officer down there taking is when so many complaints, it's not a road that we routinely control parking issues because it's not like that fair.
Thank you.
Anthony Vassal, South Kingstown. I was just wondering if it was possible to look at like maybe seasonal parking or like if you change the signs to only have during the day to, I know like rentals in the winter and it's a battle in this town and surfers on certain nights. So that's about it, anybody else said? Hold on a second.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Joe Gossi. I live on the corner of Kay Look and Louise. And I also own a property next to St. Salvador across the street there. And we've been in here dancing since 2004 and 16 years now that we've been here. I can honestly say I might have seen one Louise spot in that year one time that I can recall. We have plenty of surfers parking on Louise. Say hi, ask them how their day was going. We, my family enjoys watching the surf, and you guys are super athletic, really doing good stuff out there, it's fun to see them. We've never impeded anybody's ability to go down Louise, park on that south side of Louise where it's grassy, there's a little bit of a gip in the, in the grass now from just, you know, pickup trucks and cars parking there and get some, you know, the rain washes it away and everything's cool. But to, for me, and I know, you know, a few neighbors here, that little strip where you're proposing those four spots, I mean, look, you guys all enjoy the beauty of the ocean and that land and that grass, to, you know, turn it into a parking lot, I mean, not, I mean, it's just going to suck for all of us that look at that. And what used to be just this probably very, there's probably only a few of those spots left in the whole state where it's public access, it is grass. And it's perfect, the neighbors mow it, they take care of it, the surfers use it, there's steps to get down into the water, people come up, you know, if someone needs to use my shovel, it's right outside, I have people do it, there's, everybody coexists. And to the gentleman who's the attorney, I think, like, there's much ado about nothing here, I don't understand. And what I'm worried about is if things go wrong here. For example, like you, a lot of the surfers come in where they're surfed. And if there's, if it's a good day, there might be 10, 10, 12 cars on each of these streets, right? So do the math, that's like 30 cars, right? If you get what you're looking for, not what, not if you get what you're looking for, but if the town does this, you're down to 10. And now people are frustrated because they've got four spots in front of their houses, little teenage girls outside, you know, look, dudes are going to change, it's going to happen, people are going to get frustrated, and now what's going to happen? They're going to call cops. Hey, hey, there's extra parking on Louise, there's extra parking at Conne. You're not going to get what you're looking for. I think if we just, what's that?
It's the old touch.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, but I think about like what this gentleman said, in all the years you've had, there's been no complaints from Louise Avenue, there's been no complaints from, I think one complaint from Conne. And I think, I don't know what's going on in Kay Look, I'd love to know who's following up with complaining, I don't know what they're complaining about because it's kind of weird. You know, it certainly happens a few times a year, it's not all the time, right? So, look, everybody converges, they park, they surf, and they leave. Why rip up that beautiful little spot for an occasional one or two times, three, four, five times to surf, right? Do you know what's going to happen? All right, I can tell you, I live across the street from a house on the left, she rents all year long. 12 months she rents, she's there for one week. All those renters are going to fill up those first two spots on the left and, I don't know, maybe some neighbors start filling up the spots on the right. Like why? Like no one parks there now, there's plenty of spots on Louise. I see when we come in, we gravel that south side of Louise, there are few spots. And, you know, you can have, you can have plenty of spots, take the, take the old parking sign down, let people park there. I mean, they park there.
Thank you, yes. Recommendation from our, you know, from our town staff, we think from what we've heard, it looks like the four spots in that grassy area are something that nobody seems, not that I don't see. I would propose if the council had, as a way to go forward, fortunately put out our next council agenda, it would come from the town staff, it would be for the six spots at this point, and the three at Noham and the three at Conan. And I just want to make sure that everyone's on board with that, knowing that we're going to be looking at it closely, monitoring it, and I do want to hear from the community if they feel rentals instead of surfers are parking there, obviously we can't control that. If they're open down for parking, the people are going to park who, you know, they're going to park there, so I'll just kind of go down. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, obviously, you know.
Is this the last speaker? Because we, I think we've kind of got the best, remember, you're going to be able to speak at the Monday meeting when we make a decision. Do you, is it important for tonight, is it going to?
My point, my point is yes.
And you will, you're not available to come when we talk about it on Monday?
I am, I've been here and I've given everybody their due time and I represent.
And then who else wants to speak and then I'm going to go to the council.
I was prepared to give map, but if you want, he can go.
No, why don't you go and let's be brief, okay? Thank you. Two people.
My name is Attorney Anthony Vicenza. And I've been maintained by a number of residents who live in the areas where these proposed parking spots are going to go. And when this meeting initially began, it was a reference to these easements and how they were created, and I would suggest that this town council go onto the Rhode Island Coastal Resource Management website, you can obtain the exact documents, each of the easements that were granted. The same complaints that you're hearing now about creating these parking spots and how it's going to affect the homeowners were the same complaints for each and every easement that the Rhode Island Resource Management Council designated as easements when they were being proposed by the residents in the same areas we're talking now. And one of them particularly dealt with the inability to have parking in these areas for a number of reasons, road width. So I encourage the town council, you can access these, I downloaded them, they're there. And there's a lot of valid points, maybe 20 years ago, 30 years ago, that are still valid today. If I may also address with regard to the designation of these spots, the ten, it's not as simple as just, and I agree with the gentleman who was talking about parking spots, who's going to utilize them. If this council faces rubber stamping seven spots, 10 spots, is going to appease the landlords and the surfers, I think it's a mistake, there's a lot more to it than just designating it as a parking area. There are a lot of issues that this council should consider, and I'll go quickly as I know the night is getting long. Number one, people undressed in front of my clients' homes. I'm sure most of the surfers do not, but I have photos taken where there are surfers dropping their pants and putting on their, in their suits, I have them, presented to you when I'm done. You also have surfers who are on private property, waxing their surfboards, loitering, stretching, exercising, all the things that they probably could be prior to coming to their spot. And I, and I'm not, and I don't surf, but this is what my, this is what my clients generally think that's happening. By just putting up a parking signs, what maybe the town council should consider time limits so that, you know, there's a two-hour restriction as opposed to just having someone just park there who's renting and that spot's a loss for the surfers. In addition to that, maybe possibly putting some curbing up so that the cars do not go on the butcher's property. Other issues that my clients have brought up is with regard to surfers bringing their pets, either exercising them on private property, even worse, leaving them in their cars while they surf. And again, I find that, I approach the council.
It's really, I'd say you give it to the clerk or I'd encourage really to do it at the town council meeting when we have a decision, make a decision, I think you can give it now.
You know, I find it interesting, I've been sitting here since this meeting started and most people have been respectful, but I've been sitting and I've heard constant chirping. And the chirping has come from probably the same people who say they're respectful to my client's property, but they're not even respectful to allow people to speak without making their turn. So I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done because I've just been designating these spots as parking spots, there's no way to solve the problem and then create another one. Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you. Yes.
John Kennedy, United States of America. So, you know, a lot of talk about this, these public access points, and the one thing that struck me was that a couple of weeks ago when I first came up, I don't know if it was the town solicitor or the town manager that mentioned that, you know, when this neighborhood was first plotted, well, platted and built, that these access points were really for the neighborhood, for the public access of the neighborhood, right? So it's not public access for the world, like, you know, I've been down here for 20, 26 years, my family surfs, we enjoyed the surfers, we never called on parking, but I'm advocating that the parking restrictions stay in place. It's, well, it's there for a number of reasons, right, which gentleman before me mentioned is documentation of all of that. But it's common sense, you need to be able to get groups of vehicles down these streets, narrow roadways, it's soaking wet down there, it is wet, you know, so. But the thing I want to bring out, all right, yeah, you've got access points here, we have this issue throughout the time, you know, you have Lenwood Ave, Pocono, Captain Freebody, Wolf to Bonnie, we have the same problem there, you have East Shore Road, East Road, I guess, along Pointe du Deux, so it's not just surfing, fishing, it's just enjoying the, you know, public access, right? So we get that and as Keith mentioned, much ado above nothing. I advocate, leave it alone, everyone's coexisted and it's been fine, but I don't want to see them. Sorry?
No, let's not engage.
All right.
Keep the comments to make.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
And so there's that point to be made, right? And I know there'll be more talk about this, but the other thing is, it's the council members of the town in answer, it's town taxes, it's the town. I've heard from a lot of people, most, that don't even live in town, so I think there's something to be said to that.
Thank you. All right, so again, and I remind everybody that if we have work sessions like this and then we have the actual vote, like, I would put it on our next agenda if the council's okay with that, which would be the 20th, which would be the six spots, the three at Conan, three at Pilgrim, knowing that we still, there'll be discussion at that time. I'm sure some of you will reach out to council members and people may have a different opinion between now and Monday, so. But is everyone on the council generally comfortable with that as a, the six spots being put on as an agenda for, by, as a suggestion from the town? Jesse? It's the 20th, May 20th, May 20th at 7:30 PM. Here, that would be here, May 20th, and just so everyone's clear on work session, this is a discussion where we kind of work out the problems, and I know there's a lot of different opinions, but then we would make a decision at a council meeting regarding an issue like this, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we're all in agreement that the four spots being carved out in the middle there doesn't make sense, and pretty much nobody's for that, so I agree with that. The one thing about putting this on next meeting for just those six spots on the entry points is that we're kind of ignoring what seems like almost everyone saying that there's not a problem, they're fine with the parking in the streets, so shouldn't we look more into adding some gravel, widening these roads, taking down the sides on one side? I mean, it just seems like for both sides, there's very low resistance to that. So I'd rather do this correctly than do these two, do these six spots and kick the rest down the road. So I think there's a better solution and maybe more research. Patrick?
Yeah, I think we should go, this is six spots for now, and, you know, people are going to park, continue parking, like to happen, but the reason we're even here, everybody says, why, why are we here? Because I think we've been getting complaints here that surfers are getting parking tickets who've never received parking tickets. So that's why this is all generated and that's why we're here today. So this is, you know, something needs to be resolved, but let's go ahead with the six parking spaces at Conne and Pilgrim, and we'll continue to, you know, investigate if we can widen Louise, specifically Louise on the south side, seems to be in agreement, and continue to make it easy for everybody, neighbors and surfers and all of them.
All right.
So again, we've heard from everybody, just want everybody to know that as Keith spoke with Michael, Aiello that owns the Bond View, I'm the one that initially went to Michael and then sat Keith up with him, thinking that it would be a great plan if a local business owner got involved with, he has a tremendous amount of parking down there. He would love to be able to have people who respect his property, park there, be able to surf, and enjoy the coastline. Mike's an avid fisherman, he, in his younger days, used the right ways, got dropped off, fished. So I think there's some, you know, alternate ideas here that, you know, we could move forward on. There's a little bit with the Bond View as far as there would have to be some legal stuff done so that he would not be liable, he would expect everybody to, you know, respect his property and not trash it up. Now... So we're not talking two miles here, we're talking the Bond View. It's pretty close to all of this. It's obvious that some of the neighbors here tonight will find the two parking locations, they're not picking up the phone, calling on. So let's try to work together and say, let's just get one foot in the door, let's see how it works, let's see how good we can be with the neighborhood in this particular business, and make this work. We're right, it's not every day that everybody's surfing, you know? If the surf's up, then you have twenty good days, or thirty good days, or fifteen good days. Let's just see if we can work on that. So hopefully for the next meeting.
Jim?
No, that sounds reasonable to me, that the, I'm gonna agree with it, the two roads that are currently caved already need to have three and three. I definitely don't want to see that grassy area gravelled out, roped out, and I really like the idea that Rick's working with a local businessman to help solve the problem, that those six spots are gonna solve the problem. You know, obviously, we need to have access to these, to these waves to surf, and if the Bond Views can help us do it, I think that's great, and I commend Rick for doing that.
So thank you, everyone. So essentially, for the town manager, the proposal's the same with the elimination of the four gravelly spots, and that, as I said, would be on for the twentieth for a vote. I do have a question, would that be in ordinance or regulation?
It would be a parking resolution. Would be a bond investment, so it'd be two vehicles.
It'd be two vehicles, okay. All right, so that would be on May twentieth against seven thirty in these chambers. So I want to thank everybody for coming, and that, I'm going to close the work session. Have a great night. Thank you.
Keep dropping my calls a lot.